Like, well, it's okay. It's just really high wind. You can do just as much damage.
I'd rather they go out and be gone.
Exactly.
Exactly, be centralized.
I agree.
Okay, I think it is 5:30, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call.
I'll have a couple here, but I'll start with counsel. Clark. David.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Jorgensen.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Parliament.
Here.
Mayor Heinem.
Here.
And then from P and Z, we got Parsons.
Here.
Shorndeman.
Here.
Nick, is it Nichols?
Nichols.
Gnome is not present. Tealy.
Here.
And Heidembrink.
And welcome to the P and Z. Jack, or Brian told me you never have a joint meetings, and we've had two since I've been here. How lucky do I get?
Wait, wait till we get to recreational marijuana.
Yeah, that's true. We have an agenda there in front of you. I would look for approval of the agenda. A motion and a second approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, we are open for any public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council, we do limit it to five minutes. Mayor may not take any action on what's chatted with. Andrew, you got anything to say? You're our only hope. Jamie never says anything. So, next item is a joint public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission on Ordinance 638 amending the Brandon zoning code.
Ordinance 638 codifies dispensaries and testing facilities as conditional uses in general business, central business, light industrial and heavy industrial, and then cultivation and processing facilities are conditional uses within the light industrial and heavy industrial. One thing that came up, the mayor and I went to a first-class mayor's meeting on Thursday, and one of the questions was if anybody's going to allow cultivation outside. We prohibit agricultural uses within the city, so they can't be planting cannabis crops. We allow corn and soybean as a grandfathered status or non-conforming status in some areas that were, but we wouldn't allow cannabis to be grown outside as a cultivation facility. It would have to be indoors.
Quick question, Brian.
How?
Put your mic down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
How are most of the facilities operated? Are they indoors? No, most of them are indoor.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Grow facilities?
Yep. Yeah, the, the growing season is fairly short here, so you can only get one crop in.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So, to make it worthwhile, it would probably need to be inside.
Well, then you have more control over it completely, so, okay.
So, public hearing, you could certainly ask for more public comments from the...
Is this, you know, one of the, one of the concerns that's come up as far as locations is the continued preschool? And is this the time to talk about that?
We'll do that in the licensing part. This is just where they're allowed within the zoning districts.
Okay.
They're all conditional uses. That gives the city council a little more, or the city board of adjustment a little more leeway so they can review some of those.
Sounds good.
Issues that come up.
Oh, I can't find it right now, but I did see somewhere, maybe it was in the, but anyway, about the thousand-foot rule.
Yeah, that's not in the zoning code.
It's in the zoning.
That's in the licensing.
Licensing.
Part.
Okay.
Would you do that next?
Yep, yeah.
Do they need discussion? Yep, yep.
Um, I was reading over it, and 17-2-1D, under prohibitions of use. And underneath that 17-2-2A, there's some vagueness in there about what is under the influence. And also, and it appears both under the influence, and there's another one there about appears insufficient concentration. Who judges that?
Well, and that's in the licensing one as well. The police department and I have had a number of discussions on, under the influence. Unlike alcohol, there's no blood test that tells you if you're above this THC limit, you're intoxicated. If you're below it, you're fine. They have not done that yet, and there are no established levels. So, it's basically you're going to be observation of the officers, running them through the fields of variety testing. We've talked about it at the staff level with department heads. When it comes to employees, we'll probably have to have some additional training as to what constitutes inebriation, because we're not going to allow marijuana usage during work, so it's going to be a matter of observation and documentation.
Objection.
Yep.
Well, the reason I brought it up is, hold on, jury room, on kids that involved in California. And this guy had been at a party, he was having illegal marijuana, and drinking. And he pulled off the highway and came to a red light, stopped, and stayed there for about six different changes of the light. Out of this, this out. Police pulled up behind him and watched him during several incidents, the light changing. Went over and asked him about it. And anyway, he ended up in court. Judgment, they obviously assumed that he was in trouble. So, I don't want to go into whether he's guilty or not guilty in this case, but I'm just saying, it does come up.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be some interesting times for law enforcement.
The big thing among the jury when they were in the discussion was the vagueness of the laws of California. Same thing. What is under the influence, so there's no rules.
Nope. That was one of the things that was brought up Thursday, was some of the language in the bill, or in the law now, that's fairly vague and somewhat confusing.
I think, I think for this, so Brian, we're just really talking more so about zoning.
Yep, just zoning.
So, I mean, that's a good question and a good point, and I, I can guarantee after sitting at the meeting with Brian last Thursday, every city in the state has the same questions on, and not a lot of answers right now.
I have a quick question, though, and it's probably more for chief. So, why, I understand it. So, obviously breathalyzer, you can go right away, alcohol. But marijuana, is the only way you detect it is through a blood test? Is that right? And then there's no way?
No, there are other indicators. It's, it's, it's the same thing, you know, if you're on a prescription medication, and you're taking more than is prescribed, you are influenced, you can get, you can get arrested for driving under influence as well. If you have, you know, they, they do have indicators, they do use FSTs for things other than alcohol. And then there are drug recognition experts, but they have to possess consent to get you out by them. And then you do blood work, and it's all based on observations and field sobriety tests and whether or not you're under the influence. There's a lot of things you can be intoxicated by and be impaired when you're driving, not just alcohol, so.
And I suppose too, even if, if somebody after a work hour has decided to, and then, you know, wait, you know, like, just like anybody goes home, has a drink after work, and then you go to sleep, and the next morning you go, I suppose that, does that show up in your blood then too, the next morning? Like, if you would, even if you do?
It doesn't, yeah.
Marijuana, yeah. They say three days, I think, is what typically marijuana will stay in your blood.
It depends on the concentration.
Probably.
So, it might not even affect.
I want to tell you whether the officer thinks you're too impaired to drive or not, doesn't matter what it's for.
Right.
Technically speaking, so that's what this falls in the front, is there's just not, there's not a standard and a limit set like there is for alcohol that's accepted.
I think we'll get back to some of those probably when we get to the next reading, but for now, I think, again, we're just looking at the zoning aspect.
Yep, just zoning. So, at this point in time, since there's no public comment.
Do you have any other comments from planning and zoning? Chuck?
On just the zoning?
I don't.
We would just need a...
I don't know, this might be under licensing, I don't know, 17-35?
Yeah, that'd be licensing.
So, if planning and zoning is ready, we just need a motion for a recommendation or approval.
Pass or do not.
I would move to recommend to pass. Second?
Second, and Brian? All in favor?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
That's Tim.
You?
Yeah.
All favor. Oppose. I don't think they care. Yep.
Well, thank you. You're welcome to stay.
Stay if you want.
And you're welcome to go have dinner.
You can leave if you want. You want to leave?
Now, we're moving on to the, more of the licensing, and, and some of the questions that, that we might have are probably more related to ordinance 637. And I, I was, you know, and I think Brian and I visited about this driving back from Chamberlain. Man, every city seemed to be all over the board. Everybody's different. I don't think a lot of cities understand it. You know, we're probably in the middle of the road. Sioux Falls is going to be quite restrictive, especially on the charges and the location, those types of things. They're probably a harder line than we are. And then there's some that are much even more lenient. So, I don't know if there's any real easy answer on this. I don't know.
And then you, then you add into this that the state has not finalized their rules yet.
They got a month, but...
Yeah, some of the things that we have in our ordinance may or may not be.
They've had three quarters of the year.
You know, again, I want to bring this up on the, and I happen to go to the ribbon cutting the day after our meeting at Building Blocks, and the owner of Building Blocks was very concerned about possibility of dispensaries being located, rightly so, close to, to the, to the center they have there. And as he said, we have kids from three weeks to 14 years old coming in here every day. They have, he said, I believe he, he said eight to nine hundred people a day going through that in terms of two parents and children and after-school children, and, and so he's concerned about the location that he has. And I guess I'd like to have a little more discussion on preschool.
So, if they were to make application, it would still go through for a conditional use permit, and they would have the opportunity to make their case for denial, right? Or is that not?
Or, yeah, during the conditional use process, anybody can come in and make comments, so their concerns could be addressed a couple of different ways. Either board of adjustment could just outright deny the application or place conditions on it. For instance, you know, in this case, they may decide that 750 feet is, is the distance. So, they can place additional conditions on that permit.
The state, if I'm right, Brian, has no definitive restriction as far as, when they say school, does that include preschool or does not?
They, they don't clearly define school, other than private or public. I, I would, I would think that the courts would group school means elementary, middle school, high school, would, would kind of be my guess. I don't think they would include a preschool in that definition.
I guess the reason I was comfortable with leaving out preschools, daycares, because of our geographic situation, if we eliminate all of those spots, I'm not sure that we have any place for these people to go, and according to the law, we have to allow them to come in. And so, that was my, my reasoning.
I kind of look at the, and I explained it to the gentleman that was concerned about the, having a preschool. And the way I look at it is, on the medical marijuana side, is that we, we do have to allow it. It's, it's going to be signage that's downplayed, and it's a prescription. They have to go through the hoops of getting their card. I, I look at it more along the lines of a pharmacy that I'll probably never use. But where I, I would be more concerned is with the recreational next to daycares, churches, residences, and things like that. And that'd be the caveat that I would throw on, on this as far as having a medical establishment open up close to any of those areas. And then when we start working on the recreational, I would favor more restrictions on where those can go. And I think we heard testimony from Mr. Wolfstein that in a lot of these places, once recreational comes along, the medical gets kind of pushed off into the corner, and then that establishment comes in.
Can they have them in the same location?
In Colorado. And I, I'm hoping we're not opening up the door with, with the medical to where this location works off for a medical, and then recreational comes along, and we say, yeah, no, there's 500 or 750 or 1,000 feet, whatever, from these other.
I think that's what you're going to do.
And that's, that's, that's the complication. And I would probably draw a little bit harder line of having those restricted. We can always, later on, they can be loosened up, they can be worked on. But, you know, if, if the idea is that they can put in a medical, and then once recreational comes along, well, that just opens up the door for, for that, and we're stuck with these regulations, that, that could be a little bit more of an issue for me than, yeah.
Is that what they're saying?
As far as?
That they would piggyback and be in the same place? Because I agree with Dave. If that's the case, then I would have some heartache about that.
The licensing that we're talking about now is just for medical. So, I hate to give you, but I'm giving you fair warning that if recreational comes down the pipe, we're going to be going through the same process with basically the same ordinance, probably some revisions to it. But it will be the same process.
But we did hear from Mr. Wolfstein that, and I think in other states, and we don't know what South Dakota is going to do, right? But typically, once recreational comes in, there's really not a whole lot of money for medical. So, if the state allows, then you're right. They're, they'll have a shop set up, and they're going to go into recreational. And then do we think differently of them being so close to a preschool or a daycare? The only reason I say this, it's not necessarily what is happening, like, you know, the council members are talking about liquor stores and stuff like that. To me, what I get more nervous about is the fact that, from my understanding, the money is all cash, right? That, that there's, so that's a lot of money, and to me, I feel like it's prime opportunity for extra illegal activities to happen, and we don't want anything to happen, I think, to our children or anybody that could be caught in the crossfires of a bad situation. And I think that would be more of a concern if it went. That's where I'm looking at, is if it is medical and they go to recreational.
Yeah, one, one of the things that Yvonne Taylor mentioned Thursday, which I thought was somewhat interesting, they've been, the league has been talking to Iowa. There's 3.1 million people in Iowa. They have two dispensaries. They have 6,000 medical cards in the state. So, where, you know, if the numbers stay true, we've got 850,000 people in the state. I, I don't perceive thousands and thousands of medical cards.
No, I, I, I agree. I, I think it's, it's going to happen, though, that medical and recreational are going to be sold at the same facility. That, that, that's something that's going to happen. And I think if you are allowing them as medical to go into a place that you're worried about later on, that's probably going to be something that's going to be a problem.
So, I do have a question. So, if, if, if we're going to allow medical marijuana sales, they look a lot like pharmacies, they'll act a lot like pharmacies, and there's no indication that anybody's going to sell recreational any differently than they sell medical. Doesn't mean that there's going to be weed banners hung up in front of the buildings. And as far as crime, we get a lot of casinos that get stuff stolen out of them, and, and, and we don't have special rules for that.
I think, I think Tim, the big difference.
That there's going to be any difference in the way that the product is sold. Just because it's recreational doesn't mean you can go sit in the parking lot and legally smoke it or ingest it. But that's no different than going to a liquor store. You can't go to a liquor store and legally open up a container and drink on the way out of the parking lot. People do. There's no controlling it, unless we eliminate liquor stores, I suppose. But I, I, I don't, I don't understand why there would be any difference between the two of them.
I thought that we do have a certain amount of feet between a school and a casino. Do we not? I thought there is. Brian? Isn't there, Christina, I'm sorry, isn't there a certain amount of feet between a school and a casino? I thought we did have us, there's, I mean, it might, it's not going to be a thousand.
Tim, Tim, the only comment I'd make is that I think the clientele that you're going to attract for medical might be quite a bit different than what you would attract from recreational.
The people who want to use it recreationally can get their hands on a medical license now. I mean, you can, you can get a medical card currently.
Yeah, and I can't, I can't say yes or no, but it just seems reasonable that it's probably, in some respects, too different, too different. Well, I don't know if there's any other thoughts on it. I mean, we can, you could beat it to death.
This is just for medical.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't, doesn't matter.
And I think we're in agreement on that.
I just have one statement I just want to say. I do want to begin by thinking the city administration and the co, and my colleagues up here, I think we've had a really thoughtful discussion about medical marijuana. And I always believe that you can disagree without being disagreeable, right? I think we do, we do this great up here in the council. We might not always agree with one another, but, but there's no question the voters overwhelmingly voted for IM-26 to legalize medical marijuana for those who may medically benefit from it. This ballot measure also provided the state of South Dakota and local governments with a certain common sense safeguards as the 1,000-feet distance between schools and dispensaries, which brings me to my main concern. As a mother of three young kids and an elementary school teacher, I cannot in good faith vote for this ordinance in its current form. As mentioned earlier, IM-26 requires a 1,000-feet distance between schools and dispensaries. However, this ordinance places little distinction between school playground and random business. School activities exist outside the walls of the school, but this ordinance ignores it by measuring the 1,000-feet distance from the school building instead of the school property line. Sioux Falls, T., and Harrisburg measure from the property line, and I think if you ask most residents, I believe they would agree that school includes the grounds where ban practice, outdoor sports, or even recess occurs, and it's not just in the building. So, I, I feel strongly on that. I know I voted for the first reading because I was hoping public would be here for input, but I cannot vote for this with it being foundation to foundation.
Thank you, Vicki.
Well, Vicki, I'll just have to make a comment. I'm, I'm in favor of the foundation to foundation or building to building, because I think it does, for 1,000 foot, because I think it does encompass, okay, if you measure from, I don't care, pick a school here in town, and you go from that foundation to foundation of any other building, 1,000 feet away, the nearest, let's use the high school maybe as an example, you go 1,000 feet, you're down past, what, what did you say, the Alliance Building?
Yeah, 1,000 feet from the foundation gets you to the west side of the Alliance Building. 1,000 feet from the property line gets you to the east side of the post office.
Okay. Okay, so, if, if you were going to go from property line, I'm just going to say the property line from the foundation to the property line is probably somewhere on the, even being generous here, I'm assuming it's in the, in the ditch in, between the Highway 11 and the school.
Yeah, probably at the front side of their parking lot. Pretty close.
Right, so, if that's, if that, that being said, we're, if, if that was a playground, and it's not, it's parking for, you know, a few, library, you could use the, the middle school as an example, too. You got playground, I think the 1,000 feet more than gets out, gets us out past where any kids would be playing, sports, or just recess or anything like that. So, I think, I'm, I'm, personally, I'm fine with the 1,000, 1,000 feet, because I think it, it does address what you're talking about, Vicki, with, with the playgrounds and such. But if we go 1,000 foot, that's just putting us out even further, and we're, and we're just restricting business even more if we go property line to property line.
So, what would happen if, well, and we know that at some point the high school's going to add on. And if we go foundation to foundation, is that just going to be grandfathered in?
You? The way I would interpret it, if there is a existing medical cannabis facility in, located there, and then you add on to the high school, and that, that medical cannabis facility would be in that 1,000 feet, they're grandfathered in.
What about a new school?
Same thing. If you had an existing cannabis facility and a school built within that 1,000 feet, they would be grandfathered in, and it could stay there. It's, it's like somebody that builds a house out in the country next to a hog lot. Hog lot's there first.
Right.
So, you know, they don't have to close up shop.
Well, I'm going to interject here real quick. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Lisa.
Okay. I just want to interject that under the city's zoning and potential ordinance structure, they'd be grandfathered in. Now, whether the state would consider them grandfathered in or not, I can't speak to that, because the state could come in, so I don't want a member of the public to later think that if a school is being built near an existing cannabis establishment, that the state can't come back in. You know, state has their regulations, and if the state wants to take away the certification, and then they don't have the certification, we would be taking away their certification, then we'd be taking away their license if they don't have certification, but that, then, in my opinion, would be between the state and the establishment. So, if somebody's violating a state law, whether they're grandfathered in or not, I'm not going to speak to that, because the state has a lot more power than we do. So, under our zoning, we would grandfather them in, but that doesn't mean they can keep their certification under the state law. I just wanted to make sure people understood the difference there.
Thank you, Lisa.
What if the marijuana place wanted to add on?
Then it would, then it would, it would be, it would be subject to the 1,000 feet.
And tip, tip, typically, if you've got a non-conforming use, so, let's get real confusing here. You've got an existing facility, medical facility, outside of 1,000 feet, high school adds on. outside of a thousand feet, high school adds on, they're now within a thousand feet, so let's say they're 900 feet. The medical cannabis facility, this is, like Lisa said, this is city stuff. The medical cannabis facility would be considered a non-conforming use and you're grandfathered in. Now, you can't expand a non-conforming use, you can't enlarge a non-conforming use, you can't make it any more non-conforming. So they would be stuck, they would not be able to add on.
If they wanted to be, what if they wanted to add on first?
It, it, it's kinda first come, first served. If they wanted to add on first, as long as they're outside of that thousand feet, they'd be, they'd be okay.
Or if the school added on first and then they're non-conforming use and then they wanted to remodel?
They could remodel inside as long as the footprint of the, the outside footprint of the building didn't change.
Re-roof or?
Yep, you can do routine maintenance. Yep, you can do routine maintenance, you just can't expand the size of the building. Problem, uh, the zoning ordinance is, is all of our ordinance is typically property line property. Same reason. So that, um, somebody isn't, can't help because of what somebody else does. You know, it protects their property rights. So for example, billboards within a certain distance of a residential district. And so that goes to a property line for that specific reason. So I would suggest that someone on the board, on the zoning board, that it would make life a lot easier for all parties involved down the road if you went property line, property line instead of building, building to building. Because it, it provides more flexibility and latitude for both property owners.
And it's consistent with our other ordinances?
That does make a lot of sense. You know, one, one of the things that I, and again, this is a personal opinion, I don't think we need to worry that much about making it easy to get this permit. I, I don't, I think if we're a little restrictive, I, I think that's okay. So may or may not put, you know, the best locations, and I, I understand that there's challenges, but I don't think you have to feel guilty about making it a little bit, you know, stricter than maybe what we, we've been.
You don't have a lot of ordinance, so there are thousands of people. That's, that's, that's even more than billboards. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what that distance is if it's 500, 750, 800, 1,000. But I'm just saying, it, it makes life easier for all, all parties involved.
The state, the state said the thousand, that's, that's why, but they didn't define what, building to building or, so, I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm not disagreeing with, with the building to building. I'm just saying, I, I'm not so worried about making it overly convenient either.
I'm personally fine with the building to building. I guess I would like to be a council that supports businesses coming to Brandon. And I think from recalling the map outline, we have very limited spaces as it is. But that did open up a couple by us choosing to go building to building. I think we're, we're gonna be a bit naive if we think that we can be super strategic and do some things and, and keep this out of Brandon because, um, Tim's absolutely right. You can call an 800 number and pay a, I believe it's a California doctor, like a hundred dollars and have a card tomorrow. I think it'd be better for them to go to Brandon and make their purchase and go home than driving into Sioux Falls and, and possibly being impaired, uh, on the way home. Um, I do think that we should make our considerations with the thought process that the locations that we have come through for medical will also be recreational. Um, I think it would be doing a huge disservice to have a business come in, solicit a business to come in, have them endure all of the expenses that go with building a separate, uh, isolated building, the vault, security, all of that, with the inevitable, um, shutting down of that business because we never had any intention of letting them have recreational.
Sure.
Cause as, as it's been said, the recreational will put the medical, uh, out of business cause it's a moot point then. But I'm fine with the ordinance as it, as it is.
But then Dana, with, with that being said, you think the state's gonna have any less restriction on recreational? Like, that, that's, medical, they put at a thousand feet. And we have two pharmacies in this town, so if medical's like a pharmacy which, and the state says a thousand feet, and we know these medical will probably go into recreational, then there too, I'm thinking, do you think they're, I mean, I don't know, Brian, what do you think the state? I think recreational, they're gonna have at least a thousand feet from schools if they're that strict on medical.
I, I would think that recreational, if you look at the, the rules about how they can sell with the cameras, the security system, I think that will be pretty consistent between recreational and, and medical. The thousand feet, I think that they would keep that in place if they've got it for medical. They're certainly gonna keep it at least at a thousand feet for recreational.
Uh, if we're, if we're gonna look at this from the standpoint that we're building this for not just medical, but also for recreational, then I think maybe we might wanna reconsider because we do have the church, you know, you've got the ability to, to look at the churches, to look at the, uh, uh, the daycares, you don't have to have the same thousand foot, but maybe a 300 foot or a 500 foot from those places because we, we also have business owners and we have residents and we have churches that have invested in the community and, you know, we, we've gotta take their, their thoughts and their interests. And like I say, I have talked to, or I've had communications with one individual that has a daycare that also has a preschool and, and that person is concerned about, uh, one of these establishments. You know, like I say, if it's, if it's just medical, that's one thing. If we're looking at, at building this to accommodate both medical and recreational, then I think we need to probably delve into it a little bit deeper and, and, um, consider those other entities.
I would have to agree with you on that, Dave.
And that's, and that's also one of the reasons that I think it's important for the standalone. If you, if you just had a medical place and it was in a strip mall and it was just medical, fine. Uh, but if, if, again, like you say, it doesn't necessarily have to be easy, it's just gotta be right. And these are all things that as we get into this and as, as maybe attitudes will change, you can always back off from that. But once you put this in, it, it's kinda hard to say, okay, we wanna become more restrictive rather than less. It's, it's, it's easier to become less restrictive than more restrictive. So, uh, again, I would have, I, I, I would be open to looking at churches, daycares, preschools and having standoff.
Longer, more distance, yeah.
Yeah, not necessarily a thousand foot.
Sure.
But, uh,
Well, I guess that's where your conditional use permit, when you, when they apply, we could certainly control it through that. But that's, that's not something we'd put into the ordinance, I guess, at this point.
If it is in the ordinance, though, it's, uh, it's easier to point to it and say, well, it's in the ordinance.
Sure.
Is it 300 feet for, or what is it?
It's 100 yard.
It's, it's 100 yards by the normal traveled path.
Okay.
So it's not as, necessarily a straight line as the crow flies. So for instance, yep, Tom's, Tom's Pharmacy, there's a church to the north of them in the, in the Fascinal Building.
But he was there first.
Correct, he was there first, but just, just to kinda give you an idea, as the crow flies.
Well, the paisley pos has a liquor license and they can because they're.
As the crow flies, it's 172, yeah, it's 172 feet.
Okay.
Straight north, but as you, it's from door to door, so it's taking the sidewalks. So you have to go over east, north, and then west, and then north to the church.
Well, what would be a compromised position, 300 feet for those other entities? If, I mean, I, okay.
That's a football. Yeah, that's a football.
This ordinance is medical only. This ordinance is, is for the medical. We don't know what the rules are gonna be for recreational yet.
I don't think it's as much about what, what the rules are. I mean, I think you, you have to think about this, that the same person that has a medical establishment, cause trust me, they can't make it go with just medical. They, they won't make it go. I mean, that was pretty consistent with the meetings I went to. The medical industry said at the ones in Sioux Falls that they're, they're just biding their time until recreational. That's where they'll have an opportunity to make money. So they're gonna, it's gonna be in one. And, uh, you know, it's very, very likely we may not get a medical applicant. Now, Yankton had, and they're gonna do a lottery, but they had,
They had?
Nine?
I think so.
Nine applications, cause they already.
Really?
Yeah. They're not charging much, 1,500. One, we've had one inquiry. Yankton was only charging $1,500 for a, no, they still have to pay the five grand to the state, I'm assuming. Yeah, application fee.
I've had two different emails, I don't know if that equates to an actual official.
Yeah, I just had, I've had one person call. That was it.
But Brian, don't you think they're gonna be both in the same location?
I would think so. I would, I would think so, both medical and recreational probably be in the same. Cause A, if, if the state stays with their proposed rule that it's gotta be a standalone building to invest that much money in security system and, and everything they've gotta do to, to make sure everything's safe with vaults and everything else, I don't, I don't see them locating in a different.
At the very least, Brian, could we, could we just put in something to the extent that recreational will, zoning will be, I don't know, reviewed?
Well, it, it'll be the same, same discussion, like I said before, we're just dealing with medical.
Yeah.
Cannabis right now. We're not dealing anything with, with recreational. So we will go through the same.
Sure.
Process once recreational gets through the courts.
But my fear is like what Dana says, if you have a private business come in and they build this nice building, like Brian, like you were saying with all this stuff, and then we wanna take a different approach with recreational, then what do we just do to that business owner that wanted to come in and establish themselves here?
But I would also ask us to think through if we do have the state of the art building standing alone with high-tech security and vaults, I mean, it's gonna be one of the most secure structures in Brandon. I don't really know what putting a football field in between that and a daycare is really gonna accomplish. I guess that's where I really struggle.
I agree.
Yeah, it may not be from the safety standpoint, it may be from the social aspect that they're concerned. And, uh,
I'm trying to look at this from the, from the eyes of the business owners that are currently in our city that may not necessarily, you know, appreciate this being next door. Uh, they might not be as concerned about the medical, they may, may be more concerned about the recreational. And, uh, and so that's why I'm kinda looking at it from that standpoint because there are people that are, are not gonna want their business next to this business. I mean, when they, when they come in, they look at sites and they, they build, um, you know, and by the time this comes around, all those attitudes might change. But we have to keep in mind that, you know, we're not doing this for you or me or him. We're, we're doing it for the business owners that have already invested in this community. And there are some concerns there, but, you know, there again, no one showed up tonight to speak to this.
I was just gonna say, isn't that kind of what the conditional use permit is all about? Is for people to be able to go plead their case, give reasons why not to approve it? I guess I would so much rather see this be case by case other than us making one big blanket decision.
It's just hard for me, cause quite frankly, I don't, I don't see this business as being anything worthwhile as far as financially for the city. There's, there's nothing in it for us. We're not gonna get, quite frankly, one dime of this. Maybe they'll fill up with gas and buy some food because they get hungry, but there's, there's not, there's nothing in this for us. And, you know, I mean, there's no tax benefit, there's, there really isn't anything in it.
Could you come to speak about this?
I did, I'm sorry, I came in late, traffic was a little rough on Rice Street coming in. If two minutes is permitted, I'd love to speak.
Yeah, come on.
Good evening, Emmett Reistroffer from.
Emmett Reistroffer from Sioux Falls, again, traffic, not a good excuse, I know, but thanks for letting me come up late. Better late than never. Um, so I've been in the industry about 10 years and, um, we've been watching all the communities closely, trying to be as involved as I can where I can. I regret I haven't been here, um, as I would have liked to, but, um, so I guess your ordinance to me, I think it looks, um, it, like a fair path forward. I could always ask for things to be loosened up more, but I'm not here to do that. I think, you know, I, I've seen the industry through my eyes in other states, so I have a viewpoint and it's new to y'all. I, I get that. And what I look forward to is hopefully proving, whether it's Brandon or T., we're looking in, in multiple places, that those businesses you, you talk to, there are always concerns upfront. And what I try to do and what I generally find is we become really good neighbors. We have cell phone numbers of who's who just regarding, um, even things like loitering, you know, just enforcing some of that common sense around the property. A couple of things, um, I know Tom has, um, I've spoken to him too with the pharmacy. I know he's done a good job of providing information. There's very few spots in town I see where this works. And I, I think the obvious elephant in the room is what Sioux Falls doing and is Brandon gonna be a place where people from Sioux Falls drive for this product? I, I, I definitely am looking at it that way, too. It's more than just who lives here, I think it's a regional thing. So traffic coming in, I think that's a good thing. And I do think when recreational does come around, a lot of things have to be decided in peer, but, um, in most states, I find there's a special tax that's applied. And I would personally advocate that that, some of that goes back to the city, some of it goes to the state. But that's a discussion we all have to be part of and I, I hope the cities will as well. So I think there can be real benefits. Right now, it's a small program, medical only. I don't suspect more than 5,000 patients in the Sioux Falls area. And I haven't heard any of you say anything tonight that sounds crazy or, or off. I mean, I think you've done your homework and you're doing a good job. So my feedback was more than anything just to let you know, I'm looking at doing business here. Um, if an opportunity opens up, we're not trying to, you know, tell you, we think this spot's better than that spot. I mean, it's up to you as a community to decide and then we'll see. And, you know, we've got real estate contacts who we've been talking to that are keeping us in mind for opportunities that open up. The bigger thing, though, is the wholesale, the cultivation. Now, right now, um, with Sioux Falls blocking that out, I think that's where you could be bringing some real high-paying jobs to Brandon. I saw that in the ordinance, I love it. Um, that's the side of the industry I mostly work in. You know, retail is kind of entry level, I hate to say it that way, but, you know, 15 bucks an hour on average, where in the cultivation facility, you'll have a chemist, you'll have someone with an egg science background, you know, folks that could be making pretty good salaries. And I would imagine they're gonna wanna live close to where they work. So as far as just community benefits, I think there's some good jobs that can be created. I think you'll find we work really hard to be good neighbors, uh, mostly because, you know, a good neighbor means good business, too. If we're a bad neighbor, word gets out, people don't wanna patronize the business. Um, we don't want neighbors to protest us at a conditional use hearing or something. So we try to be very proactive with, um, showing people how, how the business works, what types of policies we have to address things like odor, loitering, consumption, um, you name it. So I'm happy to answer any questions, though.
I have a couple.
Yes, please.
And good job.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. First question I have, what's your opinion, are the initial medical facility, is that also eventually, would you say recreational would be in the same?
Absolutely, and here's why. So people, you know, I think about 12% of the population consumes cannabis. There's different groups that have different research to say it's plus or minus. I think it's at around 12. Of that 12%, some people say it's for medical, some say it's for leisure. Of that 12%, some people say it's for medical, some say it's for leisure. But I think you guys kinda touched on who are the different customers. Well, I, I've ran these dispensaries. I'll tell you, even in a rec environment, you get the veteran with PTSD who's probably using it to treat something. And in a medical environment, you get a guy that looks like me, a little back pain. You may question the legitimacy of if I need it medically or not. So it's really just 12% of the population wants the product, whether we're selling it recreationally or medically.
I, second question would have to deal with, with the cultivation. We talked a little bit about it has to be indoors. Is that correct?
Actually, it doesn't have to be, but in all likelihood, it will be. I didn't see anything in state law or state, the proposed state rules that would prohibit it outdoor. You just have to have it be secure and meet all the requirements. So if someone could provide a plan, I do know on this side of the state, anyone who knows how to grow it wouldn't even try. We might have a shot in the Black Hills, just because it's a different climate.
And how big a facility typically would, would you, you see being built?
So, great question. In the medical days, for now, we really don't need anything bigger than a 20,000 square foot facility. It'd be foolish to build bigger. It costs millions of dollars, each square foot, all that equipment, the lighting, et cetera. In a recreational market, I think the whole state needs about a quarter million square foot of canopy space. That's the plants. So, you know, one company could have one big facility, probably not likely. You could have 10 companies all at that 20,000 to try to add up. Or a combination of a couple bigger ones, maybe closer to 50,000, which I don't think there's probably a 50,000 square foot building in Brandon, other than maybe the high school. I don't know, but, um, those are pretty large buildings at that point.
Okay. Other questions that council may have?
I just, so Emmett, I know you run a, a business and obviously not, you've been here, I think, twice, right? Since I've been here, I've seen you come twice. Okay. And I, I feel like you're the exception, maybe, because you're the only one that's come here and talked to us, and I really appreciate that. But would you also agree not every business owner is gonna be like you? That is gonna be a good neighbor, be responsible?
There's truth to that. I've been labeled as the most conservative person in my industry from some of my co-parts, just because I advocate for a cautious approach, very proactive, like you said. We have a trade group. We encourage everyone, once they're in the trade group, we have certain standards we hold ourselves to. If a bad apple comes out, I'll be the first one to, you know, hold them accountable or call for that, because it undermines my efforts, too.
Any other questions?
What do you anticipate as far as the, uh, you know, with it on the federal level, it's still illegal? Is, is it, have they moved beyond cash transactions or?
Yep. So the Safe Banking Act is anticipated to pass in June or July. We've gotten closer and closer every year. That would lift federal restrictions on banking to work with us. Right now, even with some of these federal restrictions, or it's regulations, I guess, not restrictions, it's how banks classify us. So there's 500 banks roughly around the country that are willing to work with us, because they'll classify us as a certain type of entity where they can legally bank with us. Certain banks classify us as a drug trafficker. Well, then we're illegal, and that prompts investigations, and that's where banks don't. It depends how they classify us. South Dakota did pass a banking law, which we think will help with state-chartered banks. I can tell you, I don't wanna say which one, because they don't wanna be known as the weed bank, but there is one bank in Sioux Falls that has agreed to bank with my company. So we're grateful. It does require trust with the bank. Because my partners have already banked with them in other industries for decades, this bank felt the, the trust is there to work with us, and bookkeeping is a big part of it. So if we are audited, books have to be 110%. So we, we are able to bank. Not every company can. I've been with companies that cannot, and that does require increased security.
Is that like, so is it cash only? Or since you can bank, can they run their debit? Like, I have to.
That's the tough part. So even though we can have a bank where we can take our money and put it, our customers will have, credit cards cannot, because the credit card companies will not honor it. We can't process it without lying to them, and then once they catch you, then they shut it down. And so, to be honest, you can do cash or a debit card ran like an ATM transaction. Really tricky stuff. I really appreciate the questions.
So, um, so Emmett, what have, what have you seen? If, if we think that recreational is gonna go in the same place as medical, then I'm like Dave, and I have a concern about not restricting the, the distance. Have you seen in your experience that that's put in the ordinance? Or is it done by conditional use? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, in nine out of 10 situations, um, Colorado has been around the longest, so it's probably the best example. They had medical for about five years before the recreational came online. It was a big issue, because they had medical in certain areas that didn't want the recreational. So still today, in Colorado Springs, the second largest city, they still have not opted in to the recreational. So Colorado Springs has medical-only dispensaries. Theoretically, I believe Brandon could stay medical forever and never do rec. I don't think it'll ever be forced on you. But I've seen in Colorado, that number of cities that opt into rec has expanded year after year to now, I don't wanna say a majority, but almost all the major cities and a lot of the small towns have. Um, and then how they zone the locations, I think, I've never seen a dispensary have to move to a new place, because they got the rec license. Usually the, the city and states do accommodate, for lack of a better word. Just because the sale has already been occurring, it's just what we're calling it, if it's medical or rec. The biggest difference, you guys, is the volume. So rec will have, you know, if I have 20 medical patients a day, rec will probably have 200, you know, adults over 21 who can walk through the door. So it's a volume thing. And so that's where with locations, my conversations with governments has been, even though you're thinking medical today, is that a location that can accommodate the volume for rec later? As far as image of the establishment, maybe that's just the last thing I can touch on. I know there's a lot of thoughts. I think, I, I do hearings all the time where we do conditional use. Other states call it different things, but basically the same process. You know, the last thing we'd wanna do is put artwork on or something that is disruptive to the culture. I know there are examples, you can see in Colorado and California, of shops that do look very creative, you could say. Bright, green, that sort of thing. They let people know what they're in the business of. I have said, um, in Sioux Falls and, and this area, that I hope my dispensary doesn't look any different than like, um, your chiropractor's clinic or an Avera Pain Clinic or something. I think it needs to fit that tone, because our customers will know. We don't need to put a big green billboard on it that says we sell cannabis. They're gonna know. And I hope, I know you said not everyone's like me, but I, I would hope others will follow suit. The state has actually limited in the proposed state rules, um, the size of the signage and the type of advertising, can't appeal to children, can't use cartoons. And, uh, and the advertising itself is very limited, no billboards. And, and I can't remember a few others, so.
Yeah, I saw that there was quite a bit of signage recently. Well, thank you for your comments and.
Thank you. I appreciate your service. I know it's a new territory, and you'll get through it, and I'm here if you need anything. Thank you.
So knowing that any resident or business could go before P and Z when there's a conditional use permit and state their case, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve this second reading as is.
Let's go back, because we need a first reading on the 638. There's only one. Motion to approve.
Oh, second.
Okay, you lost me here, Brian.
We forgot the council to make a motion on the first reading.
Yeah, P and Z made the recommendation.
And now we have a person second.
Did someone make a motion?
Tim and I second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve the original 638 planning and zoning. Are there any other discussion, questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion.
Approve the second reading of ordinance 637.
A motion and a second to approve the second reading of ordinance 637. Questions, discussion?
So the way we've got it, just to clarify, the way we've got it right now is a thousand feet. I mean, that's our, kind of our sticking point. Thousand feet built from the building of schools, correct?
Correct.
That's our limitation.
Correct.
Public, okay, Paul?
Yes. I have a question. Is, is a cannabis establishment have to be a freestanding building or can they be in a strip mall? Freestanding.
Based upon the state.
Or in a building with other cannabis-related businesses.
Like a girl facility out in industrial park could also have.
So if your strip mall had a lab and a dispensary, then they could exist together.
If that was it.
But, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
So for instance, they can't go in the Arby's strip mall.
Unless they can Arby's. Yeah. And if, okay, so my question is, if, if they were in a, in a building that was, had something else in it also, then would the thousand feet go to the edge of the building or the edge of the, the wall where the dispensary starts?
It's, it's foundation to foundation. So if it's in, if the building, if the cannabis establishment is in the same building as Arby's, it would go to the foundation wall that's closest to the church or the school.
One of the restrictions I read of here is that it can't be in a mixed-use building.
Correct, it can't be. It can be, it can be in a location with other cannabis businesses. Yeah, I was just using that as example.
Like if Arby's was tested.
Somebody check, did somebody check on the wording? Because when I read that, I was a little confused. Does it say freestanding business or freestanding building? Because my understanding at one point was that was like the liquor store couldn't put cannabis in. So it was a freestanding business versus building. I don't know if I'm right on that, or maybe Lisa's still on, maybe she can, but I don't know if it says.
Lisa, are you still on?
Yeah, I'm still on. I know what.
Did you hear the question?
You might be just playing on words.
Yeah, it was freestanding business or building, yeah.
Freestanding building or freestanding business?
I think it's a building. I'm looking at the word building.
Okay.
Building. Building.
Well, I think from a business standpoint, if we allow a business to come in at the thousand feet and then the recreational goes to conditional use and we change it to 300, I don't think that's fair to the business person that has come in originally. So in that respect, I think we, we need to be upfront and get it in right away with the anticipation that that's what's gonna happen down the road.
I'm gonna interject real quick here. So the way it reads is the medical cannabis establishment must be completely freestanding and have separate means of going in and out from other establishments, business or resident, except multiple cannabis establishments of common ownership may be co-located. So it's establishment, business or resident.
Um, I, I, with P and Z, you know, told us, I, I, I mean, I obviously, I think it should be a thousand feet from property line. And if it streamlines everything else that we do in the city, it makes sense to me for the school a thousand feet. And then I would be in favor of doing something with the church, or with the preschools, too. If it, maybe it's just 300, I don't know. But, um, like Dave said, I agree. It's always easier to be a little more restrictive and ease up on it. I mean, that applies in so many areas of life. And I'm just gonna say, as a teacher, starting off the school year, you're a lot more strict than you are come spring, right? So, um, and it's a lot easier. And, and maybe once the waters are more calm, I appreciate what Emmett said, too. This is all uncharted, uncharted territory. We're onto these, and, and some of us are more comfortable with others, but I think we have to look what's best for the community and going in. And, um, so I, I'm not gonna vote as is. I would, I like, if, if somebody would.
So what would constitute a preschool, though? Because we talked before that almost every church has a preschool, and then some small home businesses even call theirs daycare slash preschool. I mean, now we're back to we have no place left for anybody to come to town. I guess I would ask Tim to explain to us during these conditional use permits and people coming before. I think I've only attended one P and Z meeting, so I'm a little naive. I mean, what is that process?
Um, well, almost every, every liquor establishment.
On sale.
On sale. There's a, there's a handful of other that come before for conditional use. Normally, nobody comes to speak against them. On occasion, you will get somebody with concerns, or even the city will have concerns over a location or hours or volume, as he was saying earlier, whether or not that location can handle that traffic. And then we can put conditions as a P and Z board on that. We can tell them you can't operate between these hours. We can tell them, you know, you, you, you know, we can restrict them in certain ways. We can flat out deny them, if I remember correctly, if we would like. If their location doesn't fit what we would think would be a good location. That's how that works.
So let me just ask a question. Here's a, and I brought this up before. For instance, um, business, a person wants to bring in a vape store. Okay? That's kind of one of these marginal businesses that people will say, oh, it's just business. Or they'll say, I don't want those guys next door to me. Is that much different than a medical cannabis operation? Vaping store.
Oh, vaping.
What?
Vaping.
I didn't hear what you said either.
She said baby.
No, no, vaping.
Baby store.
Is that much different? I mean, seriously, I mean, they're, they're selling a similar product.
I would actually say it's a lot different, because the vape store can actually advertise that they're a vape store.
Right, that's, that's my, my point.
The vape store can write smoke and vape and everything outside the building, and we're telling the cannabis establishments they cannot. But it's a huge difference.
We're restricting this business more than we would a vape store. And quite frankly, I think you can make an argument that, um, one is no worse than the other. Similar to alcohol.
Well, I, I do appreciate what Dana said about, yeah, how are we gonna police every daycare, you know, preschool? That's gonna be a nightmare. So that kind of changes my thinking on that.
And we have these P and Z folks.
These P and Z folks for a reason, and it's a great group. And I, I don't think that they're gonna come bring a horrific recommendation before us, and I think we can trust them.
May I speak again to the, to my previous comment? I've heard, after I made my comment, I've heard some comments from council members about, you know, if a business wants to come to Brandon and start out with medical, but then, you know, do we wanna put more restrictions on it or go to recreational? And that kinda goes to my previous comment about property to property. If we're gonna start out with medical, we're gonna start out small. If we're gonna start out with a growing area, we're gonna start out, all businesses start small and grow. If we wanna protect these pretty, I understand they're pretty specialized facilities for security, for growth requirements. And so if that business wants to expand in the future, and all of a sudden, let's say they start out small, a church goes in, a school goes in, and all of a sudden, they can't expand, because they're within that business. And so I've heard some comments from you folks about wanting to protect that business so that in the future, they can continue to operate not only under medical, but also under recreational. And so that is why I previously, previously suggested that we go to property line. So that if a business starts, if I parcel that allows them to expand, but what if some, something else comes in and they can no longer add on that, still order, remodel it or do something? So that is why I'm suggesting that we go property line, property line, which I think a lot of people here also suggested.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think from a. Well, I think from a cultivation standpoint, we're in good shape. I think what we've decided there, and I think from what Emmett said, I think, I feel real comfortable. I think, obviously, the discussion is distances, understanding that your medical is going to be recreational. Does that make a difference? If it does, then you, then you need to probably make, um, make changes, but.
Let's go.
At this point, have we had, have we had a motion on six thirty seven yet?
Yep. Please have a motion in a second.
That's called, up or go.
Okay.
You ready?
We're ready.
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Nick.
Parliament?
Hi.
Order two, motion passes.
Motion carries, order two, okay?
But that was first.
Second reading. Now, what, I'm just looking on the state website. They have licensed daycare facilities. They don't have anything that references a licensed preschool. Even on the South Dakota Education, Department of Education, they don't have anything that has a preschool license attached to it. So I'm not sure how we would determine.
Preschool, T, uh, so.
Preschool, not, but.
They address daycare, but not.
They have, you have to be a licensed and registered daycare. We don't have to if you're low than, lower than twelve. But they don't have any regulations as to what constitutes a preschool.
I think a name is all that constitutes. Preschool, sir, match. Go ahead.
Okay.
We can't hear you, Lisa. If you're trying to talk.
Thank you, Kevin. No, no, I didn't say anything.
Oh, okay.
No, I think we're, we're gonna move on to the next, uh, budget. So again, if anyone would like to stay, you're welcome, but. They're like, we're out of here.
Thanks for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. So.
This is Lisa, if you're talking on the budget, then I would probably drop off, too.
That's fine. Thank, thank you, Lisa.
Seriously, you guys are very fun people.
I'm thinking about leaving, too, Lisa.
Sounds good.
All right, see ya.
I don't know. Okay, thanks, everyone.
Be sa- be safe.
Ask with her budget, then.
Okay, where are we at, Brian, with, uh, budget? Christina's got just some changes that she made into her, based upon the last council meeting. She's got a number for that change in the insurance buy-in program. Barb asked about Christmas decorations for Sue, so I've got some cost estimates there. Anyway, I'll turn it over to Christina.
Okay. Um, so we'll, we'll just run through, if you go on your computer on page twenty-three, um, there's no changes there. So the first change would be on page twenty-five.
Whoa, 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 go back to income. Uh, we've got a change in the SRO wages, is that just, um?
Yep, that's what I'm on, uh, page twenty-five. The SRO wages are just an increase of, um, as I was billing them out for the first half of this year, with the increase in their wages and some other increases, um, that was adjusted to reflect that.
So they don't want, they, we're just staying with one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Um, the agreement is the same, and we're just staying with one.
Push back on the school?
Uh, they paid the first half, so, no.
And the contract says cost.
And they don't, they can't really argue it, because it's, um, it's in the agreement on what, yeah, the percentage is. Uh, the other line item has changed, is the popping candy at the pool. Um, with the vending machines down there, we've had none there since twenty seventeen, I think. Every year, we do get comments on it. I told the managers this year to, um, talk about it, see what you want, you want to do for next year, if you want to move back to concessions. Brenna and I have talked a little bit. If they would like to, the vending machines can be a pain. We can only have two in the area that is there. They are constantly, um, with people with stuck dollars or coins, or they're not getting their products. So they're kind of, they can't really do anything with those vending machines, because they're not ours. So they're kind of going back and forth. Brenna and I have talked. If we're going to do it, that's fine, but it, we are gonna price it to make money, or at least get a decent amount. So that's the reason for the change in there.
Is that for, like, having staff?
Staff. We, we had a staff before, and we were losing four to five thousand dollars a year on the, on it. So that's why we switched over to vending machines, thinking that we're wasting, I shouldn't say we're wasting. It's costing us more money than it should, it should be at least a break-even.
Can we do what, like, the baseball associations and the soccers do, and they get some, like, dance group or something?
You know, one, one of the things we can.
And does it, or no?
We can talk about, we can look at that, we could talk about just having a, a food truck down there. There's some communities just bringing a food truck, the soda's candy. For a few hours.
Yeah, just for a few hours, and then leave.
That's what I actually was gonna suggest. Are there food trucks that would come from eleven to one, and four to six? I think that's one of the things we need to really look at. A, I know the vending machines are kind of a pain in the butt. We can't afford to loo- uh, I shouldn't say that, we shouldn't be losing money on selling candy. So we need to price them appropriately, or we bring in an outside vendor to do it, and say, here, we'll, we'll lease you the space for a buck, or whatever. Right. You, you manage, you set your own prices. That's another way to. I think that's a very good idea.
We don't really have, like, I mean, it would just be candy, we don't really have any equipment in there.
No. Yeah, it would be, it would be candy and pop.
Yeah, and it's really small to have, like, dynamic or somebody coming in there, it's really small.
Yeah, so we wouldn't be.
There would be no hot fo- hot food or anything, it's all.
It's just, okay.
Candy and pop.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think there's some, do some checking.
Over the winter, we'll do some, a little more.
There's a couple.
Yeah.
There's a couple.
It just might be hard on an everyday. Uh, the next change would be on page twenty-seven. The third cent, I just, um, after going through, kind of through the first one, I kind of look at that unassigned fund balance. So that is, we do have some money in the third cent next year for land. We have the forty thousand in there for land, so we'd really just need to use some fund balance, a portion of that fund balance for the land.
For land, for?
Core phase two, what we've talked about there.
Page twenty-seven.
Page twenty-seven.
You are, you're in five twenty-seven.
Yeah, five of the budget, twenty-seven of the packet. The street maintenance fund is the same thing, um, three hundred and four thousand is what we're looking at for unassigned fund balance. We are looking at, so Holly Boulevard, the north section did not get done, so that will go into next year. That's gonna be around a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand. So we'll roll that over to next year. We budgeted about three fifty this year, and we won't spend all that this year, because that, I think it was about a hun- three hundred and seven thousand is what the cost is gonna be for the, what they did finish on Holly, and then they are gonna do some work on Aspen. So, um, the three hundred and four thousand, we got a sign, a portion for Holly, but also, we're looking at doing a overlay on Fifth and Sixth.
Yeah.
Fifth and Sixth.
Fifth and Sixth. Next year?
Yep, next year.
Yep.
Brian, thank you for putting pressure on the contractors to get Holly done before school started.
Yeah, I, it, it's bad enough. Last week, I, I came in before school started, so today, my five-minute commute turned into fifteen, and it wasn't even the first week of school. So I can only imagine, if we had down to two lanes, what Hollywood would look like, it would have been brutal.
Thanks for yada. Or whoever did it.
Yeah. And then I was on the street maintenance, just so you know, we're going to that two dollars and fifty cents. So that resolution will be on next week's meeting to go to that, um, to fund mostly Fifth and Sixth next year.
That's a street investment.
Yep.
Yep.
So it's our meeting on Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the next change would have been on, is on page thirty-one. It's just adding in, um, bonding for that west side.
Christine, I'm sorry, let me, let me just back up for a second.
Yep.
So, in nineteen, it was a buck seventy-five. Twenty-twenty, it's two bucks. So that was a quarter of quarter, and now, it's jumped a fifty cents?
Yes.
If, if we wanted, if we want to overlay Fifth and Sixth.
If you want to do Fifth and Sixth, we gotta jump fifty cents.
What does two and a quarter do?
We won't, we wouldn't be able to do six.
You won't be able to do six, for sure.
How much, how much, uh, how much money are we talking here? We take it out of, uh, somewhere else? I, I, I'm just a little bit concerned about the jump. I know it doesn't seem like a lot, but.
On a lot, what would it be?
Uh, on a normal-sized eighty-foot lot, it's twenty dollars difference.
Between two and a quarter, two fifty?
Yep.
Yeah, but we're also gonna have a stormwater one on there as well.
That's like five bucks.
I want to get Fifth and Sixth done, don't get me wrong, people, because they're absolutely horrible, but there's a way to get it done without double the increase. Most of the way to nineteen, we went twenty, we went up a quarter, we didn't go up any.
We did not go up in twenty-one.
And now we're at twenty-two, so that's been, that's a quarter a year.
I hope that.
I thought we didn't go up in twenty-one. Because she didn't also.
In twenty-one, it cash flowed without that increase.
Cash flowed, uh, we were not looking at fourth at that time, and overlaying core, um.
Whatever, so, yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh.
A little bit of that, well, thank you.
Page thirty.
It's like a hundred thousand for cannabis, it's a fault, it's only fifty grand a year.
What's that?
Nothing.
Page thirty-one is just adding that bond in for the west side sewer main.
Um, we've got something coming at you for the next council meeting with DGR to help us submit an application to get on the state water fund. The state has, they, we think, uh, somewhere between fifty and five hundred million that may be eligible for sewer and water projects. No details yet, the state's not releasing anything, they haven't determined how they're gonna distribute that, but this would get us on the state water fund for this project.
So what is the state water fund?
State water fund is the revolving loan fund that you can finance. And, and the state board will determine the, what are they called now, D E A N R?
Yeah, A N R.
The board, when they approve those projects for funding, they will either give you a loan, or they'll give you a forgivable, a forgivable loan, or a combination of the two. We talked a little bit about it Thursday, and Yvonne, who's very in tune with what the state's doing, has no idea at this point in time, A, how much it's gonna be there, and how it's gonna be distributed.
I know Del Rapids has, has done a lot, the revolving loan fund, what have we done here?
We've done both. Quite frankly, the revolving loan fund has more red tape than is necessary. We can go out on the, it used to be that revolving loan fund was three, four points lower, interest points lower than the, the private market. Right now, the private market is matching the state revolving loan fund with fewer restrictions. So, in my opinion, it's much simpler to go out on the private market, borrow money on, on a bond, and bypass the revolving loan fund. There's no, there's really no incentive to it these days.
Can we put the east side on here, too?
We can, the, the west side is just further along. We haven't had any discussions with those developers out there about what they're thinking.
Um, have we talked to the county, too? I think they have, like, fifteen million.
Yep, we, 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 uh, gave both the east and west side projects, as well as the water treat- did we do the water treatment plant?
No, he just wanted the east side, west side.
The force main.
No, he didn't want that.
No? Yeah, we gave them the list of the two projects.
That would help, because that would really help out if we can get some money from them.
Yep. Nick is, is, or, uh.
Sue Metro is the one that's kind of gathering that information together with the area cities.
So he's kind of like the.
And they're looking at kind of the economic stuff of it, so that he wanted the east side and the west side ones. And we actually, we had cost estimates on those, so I sent those off to him. And then he's kind of, gonna be the person to kind of.
So it'd be nice if we got that money, that would take, that would free up a lot more.
Well, it depends on how much.
If what they wanted to give us, if what we get, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thanks for trying, because.
So we gotta get on the state water fund in order to access the potential money. DGR will, will help us with that, as lo- as well as, uh, C-CO.
Page thirty-six is the next change, just brought that contingent, contingency dollar down with the changes that we'll see here coming up.
So what, what's the contingency based on?
Well, you can do five percent of your total budget into that contingency number. We obviously don't have that in there. Where the ti- contingency comes into play is, if we have a line item that is, um, over budget, we can do a resolution and take money out of that contingency and put it in that line item, instead of going through the ordinance process. A resolution is one meeting, one, you know, in a motion, and then it's passed in ordinance. A supplemental, if you want to supplement the budget, that take, it's an ordinance, and that takes two readings, publication. So it's a way to move the funds out of that contingency into any line item that needs it.
Okay, now, I saw it here earlier, now I, now I lost it, but what page is that on?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six of the packet.
Of the packet.
Okay. How do you come up with that number? I, I know you can, like, say you could use five percent of the, um.
It really, um, you know, we've tried to keep around seventy-five in there. This year, it was kind of just, uh, you know, to balance the budget. It started out a hundred and forty-five thousand, and with a couple changes, it's down to a hundred thousand.
What's it better than the past?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Yep.
Very good.
Page thirty-eight would be one of the changes, um, that you changed on the health insurance.
Yeah, I want to tell them what that number is.
Uh, overall total, um, that made the changes on the health insurance was thirty-three thousand eight fifty-eight.
So is that?
Is that planning for every single person to, new hire to have family?
Right.
Right.
But is that realistic? I mean, we should budget more realistic to what it would actually be.
We, we have no clue.
We have no clue, especially.
But you could go by average, like, if the average city employee.
We don't know, every, every city's different in that aspect.
And especially.
No, our employees, if, if our average employee.
I, I wouldn't recommend doing anything other than the potential max.
Especially going down to that twenty-five percent, I think we're gonna see a lot more taken that family coverage right away.
We had talked about, uh, increasing the wages for our volunteers that are really pretty dedicated, and I don't think we did anything without, I'd like to see that change, with that amount of forty dollars. I don't know what the right number is, but.
Yeah, if you want to go up to forty-five for the planning and zoning and park board, it'd change about eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Doesn't water conservation get some, too?
Uh, well, it'd be eight hundred and fifty in the general fund, so it would change it slightly in the water fund.
It's while we're on the finance topic, I still really struggle with justifying to the taxpayers that we need the equivalent of an additional full-time position in our finance department to be able to do the duties that are currently being done, especially on the heels of having an additional staff added in nineteen. I would propose, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I would propose that we take that part-time position to a full-time position as a compromise, rather than what we're looking at in this budget.
I would have to concur, because to me, going from a, from a half to a, a full-time and a half is a big jump. Personally, I would prefer to see it going from half to a full-time, but not, not making such a leap.
Just, if, if you do that, you are firing somebody one-one. And she is right around twenty thousand dollars a year. You know, if it's a slow week or a slow month, we could, you know, she's around twenty to twenty-five hours a week, we could decrease that that week or that month, if it's a slow month.
We're also covering Ryan.
I'm fine with the equivalent of a full-time person, keep Karen and, and hire a half-time person. I just, I think it's too big of a jump to tell our public that we need a whole other person to come in and, and help you do your job. I, I just find. I, I just find it really hard to justify that.
I, I have to concur, and I, and I, uh, we have to take the person out, and I have, I have a lot of sympathy for her and her situation, but we're doing it with another person, and so I, and we gotta be fair here, and we're doing it to one. Not looking at one, but looking at the other, that's just not fair.
And if you... Halftime people work, heck, that's better for us, yeah, because we're not being benefits.
I, I would not hire halftime, cause you don't get qualified candidates.
Well, we did with Karen.
We had very few applications, and I would say she was the top. For the, the position that I want, the, for the assistant finance officer, or council payable clerk, whatever you wanna call it, you're not gonna get qualified candidates for halftime.
Oh, but Mike, counter to that would be, how do we know until we try?
We, when, when we hired Karen, we advertised for experience in, in accounting, and, and we got very few qualified candidates, so highly unlikely that you're gonna find someone that we want to do fund accounting with, or accounts receivable, or payable for a part-time position.
Well, I, I think that there's people out there that would be interested, I'm not saying that we'll, we'll get the applicants, but, um, my former employer, we had four gals that did, um, accounts receivable and accounts payable, and they were two full-time people. One worked mornings, one worked afternoons, they worked it out amongst themselves, how, how they wanted to work, uh, work those hours. And for them, they did it for various reasons, uh, husband's shifts, or, uh, daycare. They worked out how, worked it out how they wanted to work their shifts. At times, they even worked split shifts, so, um, I would, I'd be, I'd love to see what we could get for, for applicants. Stating that we have flexible hours as well.
Okay, I'm a little confused, okay, so first, Jack, you said just do a full-time person, instead of...
Right, or two half-times.
Okay, or, or keep the halftime person, and see if you can find another halftime person, so there'd be two full-time...
Right.
People, okay, now I understand.
Two, two part-times.
Well, two part-time, but essentially...
One, one MTE.
Okay.
My, my, my personal feeling is, is we've got a recommendation from our ci, city administrator and, and staff, and I have not known them to, over the years that I've been here, to ask for things that they did not need or could not justify. I think, uh, the position has been justified, I do agree that, uh, you know, hiring for a part-time on that, on that position does make it, uh, more difficult, and more iffy, and, uh, and perhaps not long-term, so I'm, I'm gonna go, I, I've gotta go with staff recommendation on this.
I think I would have to agree with Dave on this one. They recommended it, sorry, Dave.
Okay.
I can change.
No.
Okay.
So how do we resolve this, Brian? Do we need to vote?
Motion, motion.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we add the equivalent of a halftime position, be it either a conversion to one full-time, or two half-times.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to, to change the requested budget from a full-time to a halftime position. Any other discussion?
Will this free up, then, other money elsewhere? Is that the initial thought, is that then? Or what?
Yeah, what happened?
It's possible.
Do we still have a balanced budget?
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. I would say we need to take a roll call vote on this, probably.
Yep, are you ready? Clerk?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Call?
Name.
Parliament?
Hi.
Do we need to take a motion on increasing the volunteers from forty to forty-five?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to do that, so it would be P and Z, Park Committee, and Water Conservation, second. Three boards, we don't have two boards.
Motion and a second to approve the increase from forty to forty-five on volunteer, I, I'm not sure exactly.
Just the boards.
Oh, two boards.
Okay.
P and Z, yeah.
Sounds good. Uh, boards? Any, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Again, I, I realize that going to two half-time, I, and I'm just gonna give you my personal opinion, I, I'm very much in favor of when staff makes a request that we trust them. I feel like this is gonna be a challenge to get somebody part-time, I, I think the worst thing you can do is try to train somebody in a short period of time, so I hope it works out, but that's my opinion.
I think they have the flexibility to get a full-time. I think we can come back.
Hopefully it'll work out. Personally, I, I think we'll be challenged, but, uh, that's the, and obviously, that's the wish of the board, um, go in that direction. Other, Christina?
Uh, page forty-one would be the changes in the police department. Uh, the first one would be just the health insurance change, and the other one would be, um, the vehicles. The first one, I just didn't have enough in there for that second vehicle, I made a few changes on that, so that would be the changes on the second vehicle. The next changes would be on page forty-eight. I did increase the pool wages a little bit, we're gonna see pressure from Sioux Falls, since Sioux Falls increased their minimum wage up to thirteen fifty this year, due to not being able to get enough lifeguards, that we're gonna see pressure on that, um, and then we'll...
I think we're very fortunate to have done extremely well this year, so I think you will...
And then adding that resale in there, if we choose to, do, go back to concessions.
What do we offer wage to them? For the...
Up to a hundred forty thou, oh, you mean minimum?
Yeah.
It's, it's something we'll look at this winter, really, I wanna see what they're gonna do with the, uh, minimum wage first.
Okay.
And see how much they're gonna increase that.
If we do, you think matching Sioux Falls?
Is, is the pool closed now? Is the pool closed now?
Yep.
Yes.
We, I mean, you, you think we'll match Sioux Falls, or just try to like thirteen or thirteen point five?
I don't know that we'll, we, I don't know that it won't match Sioux Falls, but, um, we'll see how much pressure we get.
Where were we at this year?
Ten ninety-five.
Oh, that seems right.
We imagine this year, we had a lot of pool, they had coal, so...
Yeah, yeah.
But I still think, even though it'd be nice that they could go up a little bit, for those that do stick to the same goal.
Yeah, that's why I wanna see where the minimum wage goes up, cause we always go up with the minimum wage, it was up for their minimum. And then they do get, you know, they do get a bonus, they do get extra for WSI, so I just gotta compare what Sioux Falls does as well. Um, another thing that we look at is, if you live in, or around Brandon, you don't, it's less driving.
Yep.
Um, usually, there's less restrictions, as a Sioux Falls pool, they're gonna have more restrict, you know, be more restrictive, they're gonna have more rules. So we kinda place a lot off, too, but I'll work with Tyson over the winter.
Yeah, I like that.
Uh, page forty-nine would be just the change in the health insurance.
How much are the Christmas decorations for?
Uh, depends how many you wanna do. Uh, adding them up, there's six from Split Rock to Park, so past the, uh, B, or, uh, Robb Venice. There's forty-six streetlights from Park to Holly, and then there's another thirty-two from Holly to Split Rock up around Redwood. So total, there's eighty-four decorations. Last time we purchased them, they were like two hundred and ninety bucks, two hundred and ninety-five bucks, so about three hundred dollars each. Total cost would be twenty-five, two.
So this is all, this is all before, I think, any of your, year's time, we had a big discussion about the decorations on Split Rock and Holly, and we also wanted to do them on Sioux. We've never had the money before to do them. Part of my position on this budget is, I would like to see, since supposedly we have extra money, I'd like to see us do one-time projects, rather than continuing expense projects, which you do have some with those, cause you've gotta replace them, so I would throw that out there, I don't know how much heartburn that causes anybody, um...
I talked to Devon today, uh, anticipate maybe another day or two to put up, cause it's about the same number that we currently have on Holly and Sioux. The question, the, the problem that he sees is, we're not sure if we have storage for them.
Personally, I don't even know why we'd do Sioux, I mean, I think of Holly and, right, and Split Rock.
I don't know, that was the original.
I don't know. I would be in favor if anybody wants to get rid of it, I mean, I don't know, this will cost...
Well, it's not in there.
Oh.
It has to be in there.
Yeah, we'd have to add it.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, I don't think it's in there. I thought I was in here, I was like looking for it, you said twenty-five thousand, like, I don't need that.
No, it'd be under community promotions, I think is where we did it before.
And page fifty-one.
It's just something that's been hanging out there for a long time.
Oh, why Sioux?
It's a made thorough.
Yes, and, yeah.
I drive a four and a half a day.
So you want to see some Christmas cheer on those?
No.
Okay. He's like, no.
Okay.
Bah, my apple.
Well, just for, just for giggles, I'll make a motion, we'll see if anybody seconds it, and we'll just either vote it up or vote it down, then we'll know, then it'll be in the minutes.
Fair enough.
I'll make a motion that we buy decorations for, Christmas decorations for Sioux.
We have a motion to decorate Sioux, and buy the appropriate material to do so?
I'll second it.
And a second.
I didn't think anybody was going...
Other discussion?
I would rather see us spend extra money on roads, so I'm gonna be a no.
I think that's where, yep, supplies decorations, that's where we did it before.
We would normally do it on...
That's for, that's for replacements, we, it's not in there yet.
Yeah, it's not there yet.
Barb has asked, Barb is saying to add it.
Well, we... We do have a motion and a second to, to do this. I think, unless there's any other discussion, we'll...
Oh, yeah, I would ask the staff, do, do we have the money?
Move, move a couple things around. So that, that line item will go up to twenty, twenty-eight, two, for decorations.
Or we could earmark it for another road in the core, or the start of funds for another road, yeah.
I, I think we, personally, I think we have enough needs on the horizon, this is a want, and I don't think it's necessary.
Any other comments? Uh, otherwise, we will vote, all in favor of spending the twenty-five thousand dollars on decorations, say aye.
I just brought it up for discussion, I didn't mean I was in favor of it.
I love it. All opposed? Motion does not carry.
So you need to be discussed.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, Barb, that's great. Uh, okay, go ahead, Christina.
Uh, page fifty-one, is this the change in health insurance at the top there?
Thank you for checking on that, Brian, I appreciate it.
Yep, no problem.
Uh, page fifty-three, since...
Oh, what's, what's the, yeah. Okay, I brought this up two, three times now.
Which one?
Can we get a quote from, um, Sony about the spousal insurance requirement?
Overpacing?
Yeah.
You mean if we would save money?
Yeah, if we would save money, and what, uh, uh, if, if the, if we require, or made of policy, or if you, if your spouse has insurance at their employer, that, uh, they would be obligated to take that first. Cause I, I see it as a cost, it's not only to the city, but potentially even to the employees. I don't see it as a, anything but, uh, either equal or savings.
Jack, I don't think, I don't think it's a Casey question, I think, actually, Lisa might be a good resource, I think it's more of a city policy.
It's a city, it would be a policy decision, not a budget decision.
But then, but you want to know...
It would impact the budget, granted, but it's not necessarily, I would not say that's a budget decision to, you know...
Well, it would definitely affect the budget, but...
It would affect it.
We'd have to work through, I mean, are you just saying that...
We don't need to know those, we don't...
Without having some kind of a, um, number from Casey?
Well, we, we can look at those folks that have family coverage, those folks that have employee-spouse coverage, and estimate, for instance, if it's the folks with employee-spouse, if the spouse was removed from the city coverage, that employee would revert down to employee-only coverage. We can compute that out. Same thing if it's family status moving down to employee-child, we can compute that out, cause we know what those existing premiums are. The question that the council needs to answer is, are you just gonna blanket kick them off, even though it may cost that employee more money?
I think a lot of employers have...
I did the study, it's only about half of the folks have coverage, spouses have coverage.
No, you couldn't kick them, kick them off.
Are you gonna say you have to be removed from the coverage if it's comparable coverage, a comparable cost?
I think most employers will have a, an option, that if they choose this plan over their own plan, then, then maybe there's a cost to that, and it's a set cost, it's not just you're kicked off, there's usually options.
Typically, there is a savings by doing what Jack is suggesting, so I think it's, it's something that should be looked at. We had the policy at Furniture Mart that, uh, if the spouse had single coverage, they had to take it, so it's, it's a doable deal. But again, I think this is budget, and I don't, I don't, I think tonight, we're working on budget. You wanna change a policy on health coverage, that's, to me, a different time.
Yeah, and Jack, I would be, I mean, down, like, after we do the budget, if we wanna see how much we would save, because the only reason, I, I like that idea, if it is a savings, because every year, well, only three years I've been on council, it's like this, when it comes to benefits, I don't like, so if it would give us a substantial savings, so then every year, the employees know that, I don't have to worry, I'm gonna pay five percent of my premium, and that's it. We have a budget, we're gonna stick to it, because we did save some money, then I'm, I would be in favor, if it's a substantial savings. But, yeah, again, it's probably something after budget, we could, before we renew, right, renew in, what, March or April, we talk about it?
Yeah, I think you wanna work on it early, because you're talking, creating a whole city policy potentially, so you'd want, I mean, just add, add it to the next, add it to the next agenda, Jack, and just get the conversation going.
I'm, I'm all in favor of what you're thinking about doing, I'm not trying to mix that, I'm just trying to keep us on the budget here tonight, and you're not gonna impact this budget immediately, but that is, to me, a different, a different timeframe.
I, I, my point is, I just, I wanna see what the, the savings would be, and, um, I really do think that it would be a savings for, not just the city, but if we save health insurance costs on the city, and we're requiring the employees to pay five percent, they're saving money. Let alone the possibility of doing the, the dual coverage, which could potentially save them money as well. It won't cost them any money.
But if they do dual coverage, it won't save the city any money?
No.
Cause we'd still have them on family policy. There'd be no cost savings to the city.
Well, they're not gonna have dual...
Sioux Falls, they did do it, and there was a substantial amount of cost savings.
I'm not so sure, I agree with you there, Brian.
You can't be covered, if you're removing them from our insurance coverage, because they have coverage at their own employee, they can't have coverage with us.
No, they don't have anything with you.
They would just have a single coverage at their place of employment.
Exactly.
I just have one question, then I think we can move on to the budget, but, uh, are you talking about cases where the, the spouse has insurance provided, that it doesn't cost that family anything for that single coverage? Or are you talking about if spouse works for company X, and company X says, yeah, we'll give you health insurance, you pay fifty percent, we'll pay fifty percent? Would those also be kicked off? Ours, because that's, that's, that's what a lot of private, uh, companies do, is that, that they have them pay twenty-five or fifty percent, they, they supply it. In, in which case, if we're talking about that, then we're talking about, uh, passing, passing our savings on to having the, uh, the employees, once again, pay for that, pay for that coverage.
Typically, right. Typically, obviously, they would go from employee, from a family plan to employee and children. Spouse is single, is there savings there for them, is what you're looking for. Now, a lot of times, your single coverage at a company is very inexpensive. Very inexpensive, so they may save money, and that's the intent, is to save... And that's, the intent is to save them money and us money. That's not, and I get what you're saying. And I, I think it's worth looking at. And I think Casey could probably provide that information, Brad.
Actually, I've done a poll of the employees who has, whose spouses have...
The ability?
The ability with insurance. About fifty-fifty for those that have spouses. And I think the cost range to get on or to have their, or their spouse take their plan from a low of about a hundred and, a hundred bucks a month to four sixty.
And that's why in, in a policy we would write, we could also give another option. It wouldn't just have to be, you can't take this plan. It could be you can, but maybe you have to pay more if they're on one of those fifty percent plans. But I, I agree with the mayor. I think most of the single coverage plans are gonna be pretty darn good. But we could write something in there for the few exceptions that aren't.
Well, let's just see what the cost savings would be.
Let's see what it, what it is.
Yeah, my intent is not to increase the cost on the employees.
Well, it will.
I'm afraid it...
It will, I think, to the majority.
I think it's worth checking, Brian, if we could check it, and...
So you, you need, we need to not only do what the cost saving is to the city, but what it's gonna cost the employees.
Yeah, we don't want that.
So there needs to be two different, I mean, you need to look at both.
I don't think that's Jack's intent, but I think it, what he's, I know in our situation at where I worked, a single plan was very inexpensive. So a lot of our employees, you know, let's say, my wife, for example, worked at the Sioux Falls School District and Brandon School District. She had single coverage, and I had the family plan. I'm not the family, but children. And it worked well. So I mean, and I, we save money on it, and I think that's the intent. Let's, let's...
That's definitely the intent.
That's the intent. Let's move on.
Okay, page fifty-three, um, since we have our census numbers, I increased that to three dollars per resident for Sioux Metro. Uh, page fifty-four is increasing, uh, that improvement there to finish that north side of Holly next year. So I increased that by about a hundred and twenty thousand.
I'm sorry, what page are you on now?
Uh, that was fifty-four. The next change is page sixty, and that just, um, changes that health insurance number in the water department.
Christina, on the, on the wa, on the water bills, can we have, do they have to get a printed copy? Or can we have them opt out of printed copies? Is there a rule on that?
There's no rule. They can opt out. We do have email, so we have, how many have, we have signed up that? But we have quite a few signed up for that. We did that last year. I think I got that rolling.
And we don't send mailed copies if it's emailed?
No, there, there are some that want both, but very few.
We give them a choice.
Okay, so then, I would just, cause we get a mailed copy, we don't need a mailed copy. So I would just go online and set it up as a, to my email? I was just thinking we could save some postage.
Yep.
I get an email one, but I don't get a mailed one.
You don't?
Yeah, you can do one or both, or one or the other.
Can you sign up for just automatic payment, like Alliance?
Yep, yep.
You can. I didn't even know that.
We encourage some of our customers to do that.
I never, you pray encouraged me, and I probably didn't read your mailing.
No. Uh, the next change is page sixty-one. Um, increasing that west side sewer main to the cost estimates that we have, and then decreasing that list station rehab a little bit. A lot of that's just due to, um, balancing that sewer fund budget. And we typically don't use the full seventy-five in that. And I think that, yeah, that's the last change.
Okay, so we're not, excuse me, Mayor, we're, so we're not, we're not putting, adding anything in the engineering department for FTE, and we're adding one in, where, where's that, where's the new one at? What page is that on?
For Raleigh. Sewer's getting one.
And that one's for, what page is that on?
Uh, sixty?
Sixty.
Okay. And that one is for, uh, I, I don't, I don't remember what that...
For the public parks?
Position, yeah, I don't remember what that position is.
I think it was proactive in case people were retiring.
No, it's more than that. It's, it's, it's maintenance, it's more street sweeping, it's, um, doing more maintenance on storm, storm drainage, doing a lot more maintenance on valves and flushing hydrants and getting more maintenance items done that we're not getting done.
I know there's quite a bit of talk on the storm sewer, but then Raleigh, you'd also mentioned that we're planning to hire quite a bit of that out next year?
No, I had a company come in at ten thousand feet, just over ten thousand feet, but we did over thirty-three thousand feet.
Of jetty?
That was sewer jetty, not, it's not storm drainage.
We're trying, we're trying to keep with our insurance, we've always been trying to do the entire town for five to six years, and I'm pushing it at six years. So there's a town just more sewers that have to be done, more streets that have to be maintained, so it takes more people.
So is there any compromise on, on this to do half-time? Like pick up, add some to the payroll for, um, summer hours? And then, cause I, I have the sheet where it kinda had the intent of, it'd be nice to get some people hired in case people retire, which I, I get that. I would, I would love to hire more people in case stuff happens in my business. But I don't know, I just, I feel like we should be hiring people when we really have the need. And I, I don't, I don't know if we really have the need for a full-time or if a part-time equivalent would work.
We have the need for a full-time, Raleigh.
Yes.
Yes.
And I, there I would side, like, how many pousing permits do we do this year?
Well, we're at fifty-seven now.
Right, and that's more than we did the whole year last year. So I mean, we are growing, and I feel like, I appreciate Raleigh and all what his guys do. And I, I do think it'd be a benefit to have somebody trained in, so I, and if Raleigh...
I see why.
Well, I, I can support hiring, needing to hire a labor, new, another laborer, cause we're growing and all that. But just to hire somebody to, um, work into a succession plan, that I have a little trouble with, cause I think you should be doing that anyway, and I think you are. So if it's, if it's truly a need, where we just need, you want more people to help out with all the things that you do, Raleigh, I'm all in favor of it. But when you say it's just to help out with planning ahead...
Not Alliance this section, cause we already have that. It's, I have a foreman, and I have a lead operator, and there are people that are capable of moving to those positions already. So what I'm trying to do is get somebody hired at a lower level, so I have a lot of these to need to work with easily.
Right. And God forbid somebody...
And I'm telling you right now, I told Brian I want three people in the next five years. Whether I got people that retire or not, I will be coming back every year for the next five years, three years, whatever, to ask for more employees.
And as far as the seasonal goes, we, we attempt to hire seasonal every year. This year you had, how many?
Four.
Four. Last year we had six.
A year for two months. Cause they were in school, and then they have to go back to school or...
But they did the painting lines. I saw those boys out painting lines. They did good for that, for the little time, they were there. Cause they were like high schoolers, right? Or college kids?
They paved streets and everything else that we can do.
Oh, they did, I just saw...
But the other side of that is, when we hire seasonal or part-time employees, you don't put them in the sewers.
Yeah.
Cause the city won't pay for them to get the shots that we get when we have to work in sewers. So it kinda defeats the purpose of hiring a part-time person to work in sewers.
And I appreciate that, that, you know, I think we've gotten a little confused here, that, that this isn't about succession. This is about work. And I think we need to make sure that we, the city is growing, and he's, he's right. He'll, he'll be back, I, I can guarantee it, so...
I hope he are, cause that means that we're grown.
Well, we're in this year.
Yeah.
I mean, fifty-something homes.
Eleven thousand forty-seven.
So we go, over two thousand, almost a thousand people.
And with, with this growing, I, I would just like to have one final conversation on, on the engineer position. Uh, we heard from her directly of her need and what she could have Ryan do. It would mean us giving her the equivalent of a half-time person on top of the half-time she has. Again, one FTE equivalent. I think we need to give her the help.
Well, I, as I mentioned at the, the last meeting, Dan Solson believes that that person can also be economic development slash planning and zoning. Tim, I think you had some similar thoughts on that?
Very much so, yes.
That... I, I do believe that we're gonna hire somebody to development director, and that will take things like planning and zoning, that will take a, a point person for developers, for people who are looking to move to town, whether it's bring a business, bring a development. I do not believe, and I think Tammy does a great job, but I do not believe she needs an assistant. I, I, I just can't stress hard enough. And we already went against staff recommendation on one thing, and I wasn't in big favor of that either.
Okay, I think at this point, Brian, we're, what do we need to do? Is this second, third, final?
No, this, uh, we'll do what we need to do based upon the motions tonight. And then you'll have the first reading. The ordinance will be ready for the first reading at the September seventh council meeting.
So it's next Tuesday?
Yep.
That's crazy.
That's what we're gonna vote on?
Yep. Well, the first reading. It's an ordinance, so it'll take two, two readings.
Okay, and then we'll have it right before.
And then it'll be September twentieth.
So I'll need to call in on Thursday. What number is that?
I will be gone also on Thursday.
We'll email you the numbers.
Can you email me?
Are you calling in?
I'll try.
Cause it's just a different call-in number, if it's more than one.
I'm gonna be in Atlanta, so I won't...
I don't know, I'm gonna be in a car, so...
I'll try, but...
There is a, it's a busy meeting.
So if it's a multiple number, or multiple people calling in, you need a different number?
Cause it's a conference line, then?
You'll have to send me one.
I'll just send out the conference line number.
Okay, uh, at this point, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Yeah, so it's a top in a car. Yeah, it's a five dog. Okay, so, and then we'll head out to this. He's sick on the bed. Oh. Oh, he's a funny dog. He's a new one. Well, I told him, I know, he, he's a boy too, so it's just funny. He's just more laid back.
Thanks, sir.